The Monday, November 18th, 2013, meeting and public hearing of the Falls Church Planning Commission is called to order. Ms. G, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. John?
Present.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Meigs?
Here.
Mr. Rankin is absent. Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So move?
Second.
Move and second to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, we will adopt the agenda as presented. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to petition the city -- city council, you have to go downstairs. But if you want to petition the Planning Commission, please feel free to come up on any item that is not on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, I will move on to old business where we have none, and then on to new business. And the first order of new business is TO 13-27, ordinance to amend Chapter 48 zoning, to add section 48-869, mobile food service. We need to give a recommendation to the city council, and we're ready for a presentation.
Yes, I have Nancy Vincent from Housing Office that'll present this item tonight.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I spoke before you, about a month ago at this point, about the possibility of having mobile food service units in the City of Falls Church. The city manager asked that a study group be convened to explore the possibility. The group did so, made a recommendation, and put it out for public comment. You all saw that, you all saw it at the time, and made several recommendations. In response to those recommendations, and that of other boards and commissions and the public generally, several changes were made to the zoning ordinance, and that was presented for first reading to city council on October 28th. That passed the first reading, and has now been referred to you. The recommendations of the study group are, can be summarized as restricted to the business districts of the city. Their recommendation is that that mobile food service units not be allowed into the residential portions of the city, that the units may not occupy a right-of-way that includes streets and sidewalks, that the vendor must have written consent of the property owner where the unit is parked, that an occupancy permit be obtained, and the occupancy permit would cover the locations that have been pre-approved by zoning, and that operations be limited to three hours per day at any particular location, and that there's also an exemption for civic activities, for nonprofit activities, and for city-sponsored events such as the Memorial Day and the farmer's market, those kinds of events. Our, the zoning code is in front of you, the zoning code amendments. There's actually two ordinance changes. The zoning code amendments are the first. The second ordinance change is to charge an annual $250 permit fee for the mobile vending rights. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Oh, just a quick one. Is that part of the licensing fee? Do they have to have business licenses to operate?
Yes, yes. This will, they're still considered to be business owners in the city, so other than the zoning permit, they will still have to go through the regular business licensing, pay meals taxes, depending on where the business resides, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my question is, I was just double-checking to see if I had cross-checked, but about the owners of the units who are addressed outside the city, not having to collect Falls Church meals tax.
They will be required to pay Falls Church meals taxes for whatever food is sold in the city.
That's not what?
According to the ordinance?
That's what Sam's, Sam's memo of November 13th, he forwarded to me, it indicated that --
Number four, gotta page one.
If the food truck's home address is located outside the city, they will apply for an occupancy permit at the zoning department and register with Commissioner of Revenue to pay the $250 flat fee and receive the meal tax kit. They will not be required to pay a gross receipt tax on tangible personal property tax. And if the food lenders are located, food vendors are located outside, then they are required to pay a business license tax based on their gross sales tax in the city. It says outside the state of Virginia there. Register for the meal tax and pay the $250 flat fee once a year, and they will need to get an occupancy permit. They do not need to register their food direct on the city or pay tangible personal property tax. This is from Sam, the tax auditor, as part of the attachments, so.
That's the case. I think it's unfair to those who live inside the city who want to do this. It sets up an unequal situation.
The, I haven't seen yet what Sam wrote to Gary, but as far as the ordinance is concerned?
It doesn't have it in it.
It's not included in the ordinance, so that would be an administrative decision, and that's something that we could work out administratively.
I'm just concerned about that. That's why I was saying, yeah, I quick went and tried to scan down to see if it was included. And I was just going on his letter, but I think that needs to be clarified.
Okay.
Because even, you know, I just think that would be an unfair situation, unless there's a law prohibiting it or something or other like that. Because I know Fairfax County doesn't have meals tax, but, but, just find out, please. Will do. Thank you.
So basically, his memo is his reading of the tax part of it, and that's not part of the ordinance?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
And would, would his reading be the final, the final ruling on this, or is this something that city council would, would take care of, or?
The administrative piece of it would, would not go to city council. The city council will decide on the law and the ordinance, which are the two pieces in front of you. The administrative piece of it is, in part, is governed by, it is governed by state law. So it's a matter of looking at the state law, and the city will absolutely follow the state law guidelines.
So I expect you'll probably relate to him that there were some questions about this.
I will absolutely do that, and we'll clarify with the Commissioner of Revenue.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Russ?
Yeah, I was curious what the thoughts were from the task force on prohibiting the mobile food service to be on public right-of-way. That seems, seems to, I'm just curious, let me just leave it open-ended like that.
There was actually quite a bit of discussion about that point, and the decision was, for the most part, that the city streets are too narrow to allow the vendors to park on the public right-of-way, to block the streets, or to block the sidewalks. There is an exemption for, for events, and so in the cases where there is an event that can be controlled, then that could be an exception. But generally, to have a food cart come and stop in a street, it would, it would impede traffic.
Okay. And in the ordinance, there's a, on Part 1A, it says that there's conditional use of an R district. If they're stopped, they're allowed to stop in an R district for no more than five minutes to conduct a transaction. What sort of thing are we envisioning in this situation?
Ice cream trucks.
That's an ice cream truck. Okay. All right.
And that's just meant to?
I think we ought to give them 15 minutes.
I have his tight.
Just five minutes, and that's meant to restrict the ice cream trucks. It'll go and park on a street for an hour.
Okay, thank you.
I know Andy was worried about that.
Melissa, did you have any questions?
Yeah.
Russ?
No.
Russ?
I did have a question about the no parking on streets, and I understand concern if they were in a very narrow street, but many of our streets do have parking, and they have parking on both sides. And if a truck was just parked in a regular parking place, I don't see how it would impede traffic. So I just think that that's a loss of a good opportunity for the vendors. I expect you wouldn't want to see four or five parked all along Park Avenue, but, and I can understand where that might be a problem. But on the other hand, it could easily be controlled by the licensing. That's not a question, it's just my comment. I know that this has been worked on for many weeks, and so I'm not going to require that you revisit the street ruling, but I do think we're missing an opportunity there.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I've got, you know, I think the same, but I also think that this is a start, and it can be always reviewed after a year to see what is happening. But yeah, I definitely agree with that, but I know that the businesses were in on it in the chamber and everything like that.
Right.
So just to find out what's going to be going on, you know, for a year, and at least, and that's going to mostly cover construction sites and other big parking lots, such as Giant, if they allow it, or stuff like that. But that was my way of thinking about it.
And that's absolutely the intent, is after, after a year, is to review the procedure and the guidelines, and to see how it's working.
Okay. Okay, as long as there's no further discussion, do I have a motion on this?
Yeah.
Mr. John?
So I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council ordinance, oh, sorry, recommend to the city council TO 13-27, ordinance to amend Chapter 48 zoning under Article 5, supplementary regulations, Division 1, generally, to add section 48-869, mobile food service, TO 13-27.
Thank you. Sir, second to the motion?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amending Chapter 48, actually TO 13-27. Any further discussion? All right. Ms. G, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Meigs?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
And I have a question. Does the, is the Planning Commission required to also approve the fees?
No.
No.
No, the fees are separate, they're not part of the zoning code, and the zoning text is what's before them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the second order of new business, which is TO 13-26. Again, amending the Chapter 48 of the zoning code to maintain principal use status of water utility infrastructure subject to sale, and we're being asked for a recommendation to city council. Gary, I think you've got this on your schedule.
Yes. The, this is another change to the text of the zoning code. Currently, the site plan zoning code refers to city-owned facilities when it refers to when site plans are required, and referring to principal uses. And with the agreement being executed now, based on the vote on the water referendum, at this point, the zoning administrator and the city attorney, in looking over the current site plan code, noted that it references city-owned facilities, so we want to change that to include also the routine text clarification of the intent and the use classification, so we can include the public water authority uses along with city-owned, and that would provide for either or in the future. And the one water tank is over near the Seven Corners area, that's the, the main subject of this, need for this slight change in the code reference. So it's really as simple as that, so that's what's before you, is to make this slight change to the zoning text. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Go ahead, Melissa.
You know, because we don't have the zoning code exactly in front of us, and I wanted to go look some of it up, but I think we have, I mean, we have some of it, but is this like the 48-1134, is that the only place that this?
That's the only place that it's referenced. It's literally just that that's highlighted in attachment two.
That's why I was, because the way I was reading it, I was thinking it was probably in several places, so I just wanted to make sure that was the only place. Okay.
Are there any further questions?
Yeah, I just have a, I mean, it's just a, it's a small question. So this agreement with Fairfax Water, is it the infrastructure including the land, or is it the infrastructure and the city will still own the land?
It's the infrastructure and the land. For the water tower, you would get the tower and the land. Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Anything else?
Quick technical question. So as I understand it, the water tower becomes a non-conforming use and has to be, we have to switch it to a conforming use, or?
Yeah, in other words, right, right now, it would be a principal use permitted by right, and according to the zoning administrator's read of this text, and it would be non-conforming without this change in citation, according to him.
So the tower technically becomes part of Fairfax County?
The land would remain part of the City of Falls Church, but it would be owned by the water authority, which is a public facilities authority, and that's the, sort of the text change.
All right. And then if they need to make modifications to it, they don't have to come to us? They can, do they?
Well, in terms of, actually, what this is referring to, it's referring to city-owned facilities, let's see, let's see, located outside of the city prior to some minimum authority on which the facility is located. So they would still have to come to us if they were to change that, but, you know, this is, it's not really in reference to that, it's in reference to its status as a principal use.
I see.
So it's a different reason it's being changed, but, you know, this is the citation that he's basing that on, so.
Okay, so we still have authority in terms of zoning and?
Yes.
It's almost the opposite of GM at the, you know, before the water vote.
Yeah, it is. It is the opposite.
Yeah, kind of strange.
I mean, that's why I was, I was first looking at it, that's exactly what it is.
Yeah, it's exactly the same, you know, we're flipping one site from one situation to another site, the other situation. That's really weird.
Any questions on this side? Okay, do I have a motion for this?
Sure. I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council approval of TO 13-26.
I'll second it.
I moved and seconded that we recommend city council adopt or approve TO 13-26. Ms. G, would you call the roll on this, please?
Mr. Meigs?
Yes.
Mr., excuse me, Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. G. We have no other business on the agenda, so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Has everyone read over the minutes, and are there any amendments to Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as approved, I mean, as presented?
To move.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The minutes are approved as presented. Thank you, Ms. G. Let's see. Planning Commission reports.
Yes, Melissa? Yeah, I just have a quick one. I know everyone's been given an invitation to tour the Easter Seals building, and I actually went on one on Friday for parent-alumnis, because two of my children went through the Child Development Center on Cherry Street with Easter Seals. Anyway, the building, it's spectacular, so if you can go do the tour, you should. Just some really neat stuff there, you know, when Monarch got their site plan with us, they were planning on having that be a platinum building, and Easter Seals does plan to get the LEED certification, and they may be able to still be platinum, if not gold.
Wow.
But the coolest thing there, and that's why I think we need to see, is that they have solar panels, and in the older classrooms, like the three and four, five-year-olds, they actually have some meters in there so that the kids can see how much power is being generated, and how much power they're using. So it's kind of going to be a really interesting place for kids to learn a lot about alternative energy uses, and they also have geothermal there, and they're going to use the building to teach kids about a lot of environmental stuff, which I just think is really very cool.
They did get the geothermal.
They did. I didn't think they were going to, but--
Yeah, I didn't either.
Yeah, but then they said that, you know, and it was already drilled, and they were able to get some, I guess they got, they got some corporate money to come in to help them get the equipment, because it was the cost of the extra equipment.
Oh, great.
So, and also, I just want to mention to people, if you'd like to buy a brick, they're selling bricks for $200. I brought three bricks, one for each of my kids, and actually, a bunch of friends of ours that also went, we all bought bricks, and we're having a whole section of just our kids that went to preschool.
A playdate.
Yeah, yeah, it's nice. But anyway, if you have a chance, do the tours, and just great. I know, I think their opening is January 10th or something like that.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so that, I think that opening is going to be open in a public, so it's very cool.
Off.
I just had a, had a quick question. What color are the bricks?
They are Falls Church red.
Oh, okay.
Very traditional.
Yeah. Maybe we can have the developers buy them.
$200 each, so.
Found mine up at George Mason again today, and I've got a short one.
Okay.
Went to the joint work session with city council and school board. I just wanted to just, the CIP is going to be rather strange this year. I do think that along with, you know, thinking about the CIP and the city center and everything, we really need to get going on the special opportunity area of the George Mason site, and really get going on that one, because it might come before, you know, we've got to somehow either stay even or ahead of with that. But it was a very interesting meeting, fairly calm.
Good, good.
I think, I think in regard to that, I know Jim has been looking at reprioritizing to make that one the next one after city center.
Right, right.
So I know I've seen a graphic already reflecting that, so I think he's going to come talk to you about that.
Yeah, it's got to get really fast, because, you know, who knows what's going to happen.
What?
What do you mean by that?
I just, you know, I just think, you know, that there may be some proposals for some type of development up there before we even have a plan, much, much the same as what was going on down at South Washington Street.
Right, okay.
Before we got the South Washington Street plan, and that's what I meant by that.
I thought you meant there were already plans out there to develop.
No, no, no. But I, that's what I just have a real feeling about, is that there might be something coming in that will precede our plan for--
I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to be trying the highest building in Virginia there, you know, that it was already approved, and I didn't know about it. That's all.
Rob, did you have?
I'm curious why, what's going to be different about the CIP from that meeting? I didn't, I didn't hear what they had to say.
Do you want to say anything? It's going to be kind of one of these wide-open deals, I bet, you know, of trying to fit into the CIP, you know, plans for the money for a school and stuff like that. I think it's going to be rather complex and interesting.
Like a $99 million placeholder?
Yes.
We're used to be.
I would commend to you the article, well, the article in the Falls Church Post, and then the other article, the other article in the news press about the, everybody asking for really a lot of money, and it, and when it comes to us, it's this amorphous--
Yeah, yeah, sure. Okay. Well, that sounds standard.
Yeah, I'm just, I just, I'm not--
All right, thank you.
It does seem normal. We get these big placeholders, which technically won't fit in the CIP based on the formulas that we're supposed to use.
As it doesn't work, yeah.
So we're like, well, it won't fit.
I'm a no. I just, I'm a no, if that's what we have to do.
Yeah, well, I mean--
But we're going to see if we can't get ahead of this.
Yes, and we'll see what happens.
We'll see what happens. I want to follow up on something that I said in, that I said last week, and it was in the minutes, and that kind of brought up some questions to me about my question. I was talking about the 408 Van Buren, and--
What line?
Pardon?
What line?
237. This is not a change. This actually happened, but I, but I did have-- I already proved this. Mr. Snyder stated that once the boundary line is determined, then the city could mark that line in some manner. This development just happened. I'm astounded that we don't have a boundary line already, so--
Yeah, that's a good point.
Mr. Fuller, could you bring, answer my question on that one? I mean, I know that's what was said, and I know that I asked the question, and that was the response, but I just want to know why was that--
Yeah, I don't have a copy of the minutes before we, so you're saying up on the Haycock Road area, all the--
No, I'm saying on 408 Van Buren, I suggested there was city property being improved so that it looked as though it was part of the property that, residential property that had just been developed. And I wanted to know, how could a builder suddenly start improving city property, and particularly because there was a lot of controversy involving that particular property. And Mr. Snyder said that he was checking it out, and, and he said that once the boundary line was determined, I kind of glossed over that last week, last meeting, but now reading it in print makes me wonder, well, this house isn't even finished yet, so why isn't there a boundary line somewhere that we can look at? What I'm guessing is that, you know, we have the plat of the property. Right. And what he's talking about is going out in the field and finding that iron peg and measuring it and marking physically. That's what I think, my interpretation of his comments. Okay, that's, that's a good answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just be prepared, I'll be asking this question every week. So maybe you could just move--
We'll just ask about--
Yeah. Okay. Gary, do you have a planning director's report?
Yes, I just have a few items to mention. I'm going to introduce Paul Stoddard. He has a reminder for you.
Okay. So this Saturday, November 23rd, there is a community meeting for the city center small area plan. We had the kickoff meeting several months ago. What staff will be presenting today is a draft plan to the community. The meeting starts at 9:00 a.m. with an open house, when the public can tour some storyboards. Presentation begins at 9:20, and then the meeting will run through, looks like 11:30. So that'll include a presentation and some breakout groups. For Planning Commission, you are off the hook this meeting. We have gotten sufficient staff to facilitate all of the discussion groups. Still, staff encourages you to attend so that you can engage in the conversation with, with the community.
Thank you.
Yes.
Nice talk.
Anyone mention?
Yes.
I should mention that my Girl Scout troop will be in front of the community center selling baked goods for their trip to Europe, which they're planning to have in three years, and it's going to take a long time.
Is this part of the planning director's report?
No, no, but I just want to mention that. If you need baked goods during this meeting, No, no, but I just want to mention that, if you need baked goods during this meeting, they'll be out there.
Oh, right in front of this meeting, okay.
Yeah, and this was planned before you guys scheduled a meeting there, so it's just, it just happened, luck. Parinipitous, so there you go.
Thank you.
Okay. Was there something on, on this past Saturday, too, that I know, if there was, I missed it?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Sure, there was a community meeting for two pedestrian projects, one along Northwest Street and the other one along Roosevelt Street. They are, one of them is a Safe Routes to School project, that's the one on Northwest Street, and it's, there's a need for better pedestrian safety for getting to Mount Daniel School, as well as a number of bus stops that are on that corridor. The other route along Roosevelt Street, that's a major connector for people to get to the East Falls Church Metro, especially if you're in the Hillwood Ave area, that's a, that's a prop, a popular route to walk along. So the staff provided some large printouts where community members could look at it, ask questions with staff informally for about 30, 35 minutes. And then we switched over to a presentation format. Staff presented the ideas, what was the genesis of both the projects, and then there was a question and answer period. And overall, it was a really good, strong community meeting, there was a lot of interest in the ideas, and people really had an opportunity to see what are going to be the impacts on my street if this project does or does not go forward.
And did you have a good turnout?
We had a very good turnout. We were downstairs in the Dogwood Training Room, and we were packed in the audience chamber, which means we had about 25, 30 people in there. And it was, there were a lot of people from West Street, and then there were a handful of people from Roosevelt.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
All right, it looks like we're moving towards adjournment. Mr. Meeks?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is, meeting is adjourned.